Good evening, everybody. Good to see so many faces in the crowd. Good evening to everybody that's home. This is the Borough of Allendale Mayor and Council Meeting, July 18th, 2024, at 7:30 PM. Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement and call the meeting to order?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the July 8th, 2024 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website. Councilwoman DeLuiseo.
Here.
Councilwoman Holman. Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell. Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Mayor Wozinski.
Here.
Everybody, please stand, salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing here, one nation, under God, united as one. Alrighty, next we have Agenda Review. We are going to have a nice proclamation to start the meeting, which is always a fun way to start our meeting. We have then our Approval of Minutes. We have two ordinances that are on the agenda for second reading. The first one is to amend Chapter 53 of the Borough Code. It's Officers and Employees. We had a couple of adjustments to make. We divided up a couple of positions in the Borough. One being the Director of Communication and Admin Position, and also Board of Health position. Another ordinance we have for second reading and public hearing is an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the Borough Code to allow for curb-to-curb paving of our streets. So when utilities come, instead of paving only half the street, now they're going to be required to pave the whole entire street. And I will be getting probably a lot of complaint letters about that, but that's okay.
Not from our residents.
And not from residents, exactly. We also have a resolution for to authorize a capital budget amendment. And then we have a couple of ordinances for introduction. We have one, which is a bond ordinance for construction of our community center. And that's just actually shifting some money around for that. And we also have an ordinance supplementing the code for our police department. Since we have so many new police officers, we had to adjust like the time that they had to spend in department before they went to the next position. And then we have our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is routine, and it is enacted in one motion. But I'd like to point out a couple of things to show all the great work that we're all doing. One is authorization to use a particular contract vendor for purchasing. Sometimes we use a state contract vendor. Instead of going out and having a bunch of other vendors come, this way we know that they're a tried and true vendor, and everything's on the up and up. We actually have two more SLEOs, huh?
Not two more, just renewing our agreement with.
Oh, okay, that's why I was wondering where they went. Okay, so we're renewing the contract for the SLEOs. As we all know, there's police officers now, at least one officer in all of our schools. We are also approving the Teamsters contract. This is a contract for our DPW workers. We worked very, very hard on this contract. A lot of back and forth, and I think we came up with a really, really fair contract for our existing workers and set the Borough up for success in the future. We also have certification for our annual report, our audit. We actually came through with Shining Stars. So thanks so much to our CFO, Allison Altano, for doing such a great job. Sometimes, you know, a lot of things get flagged, and we actually didn't get flagged for, you know, only like a couple little minor things, so that was great. We are also going to be purchasing a bucket loader. Somebody's happy over there about that for our DPW. And welcome, Kara, our new police dispatcher. Alrighty, so now, we also have actually a closed session. A closed session is not open to the public because it has to do with either potential litigation and the governing body speaks among themselves. So we're going to be talking about an affordable housing lawsuit that's going on with all the municipalities in the Borough. All right, so first, let's start. Well, let's open, actually, let's open the meeting up to the public. Does anybody have anything that they want to talk about on Agenda Items? Come on up.
So my name is Elijah Schindler, and.
Please state your address, too.
Oh, yeah, 635 Franklin Turnpike, Allendale. And on June 14th, while I was on my way to a friend's house, this is while Franklin Turnpike was under construction when they were doing a whole road. I was driving my 2009 Audi A4 towards the Waldwick, and I just passed the Franklin Turnpike, the intersection right in Allendale. And I'd noticed that there was a couple manholes, raised manholes, that were like unmarked, not really painted orange. And as I was driving down the street, I had actually hit one on my, and it contacted with my sway bar link at the bottom, and it sheared my front subframe in half. Along with that, because my steering rack runs through my subframe, it broke my steering rack and my driver's side axle. And so with that, I mean, I have 17, I just graduated from Northern Islands. I only work part-time. So far, I've covered all the expenses myself, but it's just I can't anymore. It's too much, and I'm just asking for a little help if that would be okay. As you could see in the pictures, I have stated in picture number one, this was later, I've actually figured this out this week, which is why it's become too much, is my subframe actually is connected to my transmission, and it cracked my transmission, there's a crack running along my transfer case on my transmission, and it sheared the bolt off inside my engine block. So, and as you can see in picture number two that I have, I have the first circle that says contact point. You could see the bar that's running down below, supposed to be connected to that little divot right there. And then up top is where it's supposed to be connected to my actual frame. And then in picture number three, this is while I have it on the tow truck. Again, you can see the bar where it's supposed to be connected to the subframe, and you can see where it snapped up top, this one's a lot more clear. Picture number four, you can see where my axle actually got snapped in half from the pump. And yeah, all of that together.
Did you bring the receipt?
Yep, this is the receipt we have, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So let me just respond. So first, thank you so much for coming. I know it's probably not easier, fun to come here. And also my apologies because I did not receive your email, and then your grandmother forwarded it to me. So, and I actually just emailed you back.
Oh, you did, okay.
So I did inquire about that. I mean, it's not an Allendale Road, unfortunately, and it's not an Allendale job. And it's a county road. And we did inquire to the county. Our DPW supervisor, Superintendent Andy, reached out to Tom Connolly, who's the head of the county. He did say that you can call them, there is a number, and I sent you that number. And he does want some pictures. Did you happen to get a police report?
So I didn't actually get police involved because I had actually pulled the car aside, off the road to enough where cars could pass me. But I have a AAA card, so I called AAA and came within 20 minutes.
Okay.
And then I got towed to the shop in Allendale Auto Repair.
Okay, yes, I think they did ask for that right in the email. So unfortunately, the Borough, it can't really do anything. So, you know, if people, their cars kind of break down, even if it's on a Borough road, we don't normally, you know, it's just not like a practice that we can do. But I really do hope, you know, that the county can offer you some assistance.
Thank you.
And, you know, we're happy to do whatever else, you know, that we can to assist with the connection with the county. But I do really want to thank you for, you know, coming forward, and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, Chief, is it, it's not too late to get a police report at this point, is it?
No, you stop by if you want to come by.
Oh, good, I wasn't prepared.
Call ahead and make sure they're back to you.
All right, all right, sounds good. I mean, I do have, one of my friends was there, you need like.
No, yeah, no, I don't think so. I think you'd be great.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on Agenda Items only? It has to be Agenda Item. It's, I guess, Agenda, closed session?
Yeah.
Sure, come on up.
Gabriel K., 104 Skyler Road, Allendale, Jersey. So over the past month, I've been interning with the Borough with a focus within the affordable housing and how what's going on with that. I don't, I can't express how late I was when I found out that Mayor Montville was coming up with a lawsuit because I had spent numerous hours like scouring the web trying to find any constitutional argument. There is basically nothing that would come even close to supporting it. So I really hope that you guys as a council can come together and hopefully support this lawsuit.
Well, thanks. I'm going to be talking to the council about that as well. And I think there might be a good chance, we'll see. We've done a lot of research as well, and I really appreciate all the research. And actually, Gabe even wrote this whole thing out about the 14th Amendment. I'm like, can you explain that? And he did this amazing report for me, so I really, really appreciate it. And I hope you're getting great value being an intern at the Borough. So thank you so much. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on Agenda Items only? Mr. Thomas, come on up. Take your time.
I think I have to, James Thompson, 30 hours in that. I have to ask you to suspend the rules because I'd like to make a two-minute presentation to you, which you could treat as a petition, if you like. Is that permissible at this time?
Okay, okay.
Read that five minutes.
Sure.
Mayor, five years ago last month, a bill number S-1701 cleared the Senate Budget Appropriations Committee by unanimous bipartisan vote. The bill would have required a long-term tax abatement applicant to submit a cost-benefit analysis before a project could be undertaken. The mayor would also have to produce an independent analysis. Both would then be available to the governing body and the public. The content and the format of the analyses were set forth in the bill within some detail. One of the sponsoring senators said at this time, quote, "The cost-benefit analysis will show how tax abatements affect local county entities." This includes effect to schools and the impact on the components of New Jersey's current school funding and programs. Another senator who sponsored this all, speaking of long-term tax abatements, said, "There should be," and I quote, "there should be an immediate and long-term financial gain for the municipality and its residents. Otherwise, the favorable treatment of reduced payments will help developer at the expense of taxpayers," unquote. Bill 1701 never got to the floor, it was centered. That doesn't mean that financial implications of long-term tax abatements and exceptions must be ignored. Now, we have financial data complete for a complete fiscal period. The financial data pertaining to the warehouse project at 230 West Cresswood Avenue that's now available and served mine. This and other data permits you to publish analyses and projections of that project with some certainty and more accuracy than was available before. And I ask you to petition, I petition you now to do so at your convenience.
I'll talk to your CFO. Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. It's really good seeing you again. All right, anybody else from the public wish to speak on any Agenda Item? All right, not seeing anybody, we will get back, back to the program. All right, proclamation. I see some folks from the Women's Club here, welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming and thanks for doing this every year. So I'm going to read a proclamation in honor of National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas ovarian cancer continues to have one of the highest mortality rates in any of any cancer, and it is a leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States. And whereas each September especially, we remember mothers, sisters, and daughters we have lost to ovarian cancer, and we extend our support to those living with the disease. And whereas each year, thousands of women are diagnosed with and go on to battle valiantly against the disease. Yet ovarian cancer remains difficult to detect, and women are often not diagnosed until the disease has reached an advanced stage. Because early detection is the best defense against ovarian cancer, is essential that women know the risk factors associated with the disease. And whereas during the National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month and throughout the year, we commend all the brave women fighting this disease and recognize their families and friends, compassion and encouragement. In memory of all the brave women who have lost their lives to ovarian cancer and in support of generations of women to come, let us recommit to reaching a safer, healthier future for all of our citizens. And whereas the Allendale Women's Club will be placing teal ribbons around trees throughout the Borough of Allendale as part of Turn the Town Teal, a campaign to raise awareness of ovarian cancer. Now therefore, I, Amy Wozinski, on behalf of the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Allendale, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the Borough of Allendale, and thank the Allendale Women's Club for all their efforts to raise awareness of the disease. I call upon citizens, government agencies, organizations, healthcare providers, and research institutions to raise ovarian cancer awareness and continue helping Americans live longer and healthier lives. And I urge women across the country to talk to their healthcare providers and learn more about this debate. So thank you very much. And I have this here for somebody if they want to actually do that. There you go. Super. All right, next we have. Do you want to take a picture? Oh, good.
Yes, please.
Do you also want to come? Anybody else want to come down? So I can take a picture. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate you. Oh, my gosh, of course. Yeah. Yeah, I think it was answered.
Yes. Sorry.
All right, next we have Approval of Minutes, June 27th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilwoman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Abstained.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have second reading for Ordinance 24-09. Linda, please read Ordinance 24-09.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by Title Only on June 27th, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. Ordinance 24-09, in ordinance to amend Chapter 53 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, Officers and Employees, to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year 2024.
I'd like to open the floor up to the public for any public comment on Ordinance 24-09. Not seeing anyone, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Ball call.
Councilman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Next, we have Ordinance 24-10, second reading and public hearing. Linda, please read the title of Ordinance 24-10.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by Title Only on June 27th, 2024. It posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and Borough website. Ordinance 24-10, in ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the Code of the Borough of Allendale, Streets and Sidewalks, Chapter 233.
I'd like to open the floor up to the public. Does anybody have any comments on Ordinance 24-10? Not seeing anybody? Next, we have Resolution 24. I'm sorry. Motion?
I'll make them.
Second, please.
Gladly, second.
Okay, Councilwoman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
All right, next we have Resolution 24-185. Do I have a motion on 24-185?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second, Lova Solo.
Councilwoman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Councilman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Okay, next we have introduction.
And yes, so. Lova Solo, sorry.
Got it, you good?
Yeah.
All right, next we have Ordinance 24-11. This is the bond ordinance for the construction of the community center. Linda, will you please read Ordinance 24-11 by title?
Ordinance 24-11, bond ordinance to appropriate an additional sum of $2,200,000 for the construction of a community center on Crescent Avenue in, by, and for the Borough of Allendale in the County of Bergen, New Jersey, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such additional appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
And just for clarification, it's not an additional 2.2, it is an additional $500,000. And it was just allocating the reserve of funds differently. Just wanted to clarify that for the record. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilwoman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Second reading and public hearing will be on August 15th, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the council chambers.
Alrighty. And next we have introduction of Ordinance 24-12, amending Article 12 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale. Please read the Ordinance 24-12.
Ordinance 24-12, in ordinance amending and supplement Article 2, Chapter 26-25 of the Code of the Borough of Allendale.
Do you want to read about the second reading? Motion to approve?
Oh, this, the second reading will be held August 15th, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the council chambers.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve, 24-12?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second. Big Tyler.
Councilwoman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second, Lova Solo.
Ball call.
Councilwoman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Abstained, 24-196, yes, on the balance.
All right, any unfinished business? Any new business? Council reports? Councilman Yakarino.
Thank you, Mayor. The Crestwood season is progressing well. We've received some communication and some comments from our lead director, Tom Biscardi, regarding badge policies, guest passes, things that we could do to improve our band night procedures, as well as garbage collection regarding some of the same. Andy and I had met yesterday at DPW just to kind of get some thoughts on paper and how we can come up with the best long-term solutions, especially since we may be doing some reconfigurations at Crestwood with the new concession stand and things to that nature. Further, we'll be meeting with a contractor tomorrow regarding the tennis court project at the Red Barn in terms of, you know, what engineering work we need to anticipate, and also kind of getting our ducks in a row, so to speak, so that we could prepare for the emergence of pickleball and then the other sports that are played at the courts at the Red Barn. Last Saturday was the Midlife Crisis Band, which is always a fan favorite in Allendale. I was up there around 6 o'clock, meeting with the band, making sure that ball was set. And the things that we're working to implement to make the experience better for both the band members and the attendees are starting to be put in motion. So we're excited to continue that, refine that process. This Saturday will be Michael Murphy, which is an acoustic band.
He's really good.
He is excellent, and we actually heard him perform at a prior event, and we got his information and have him come into Crestwood this Saturday. Good weather is expected, thankfully, hopefully no rain and low humidity, which we haven't had in some time. So we're anticipating a high turnout. We'll be having an ASA meeting in August once we have a good confirmed attendance regarding the fall maintenance schedule for fields and also for fall sports. And finally, our continued partnership with the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission, this time for vehicle inspections, which were held yesterday at the Red Barn. We had 30 vehicles inspected, including some Borough vehicles at both the police department and DPW. Reception was well-received by the residents, and the inspections take less than five minutes. So we'll be continuing to work with the Motor Vehicle Commission to offer these services.
And what's the next one?
Next one will be next.
July 20th.
July 22nd.
And we have the inspection one coming back as well, right?
And then the Real ID trailer will be coming in September 10th and all.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Land Use Committee meeting, last one we had was on June 21st. Before we got too deep into the summer, we met to discuss some outstanding residential property concerns that our team of professionals has been working hard on resolving. The good news is that our ongoing list has been cut in half as situations around these properties continue to get wrapped up. We're looking to have our next meeting on the morning of August 1st. Also, on August 1st, we look to resume our Finance Committee meetings. As always, our great Finance Department continues to safeguard the fiscal accountability of our community. From a human resources perspective, we hired a great new addition to our Borough team. We welcomed Dottie Blitzer as our new administrative assistant. Make sure you stop by the clerk's office at Borough Hall and say hi to her, but you can also say hi to her tonight as she is here this evening. So welcome, Dottie, yay. Also joining the team to assist with our Borough Communications and take over the creation and dispersment of our Borough newsletter is Julia Margagliata. Yeah, Julia will be working mostly remotely, but we are equally as excited to have her on board. A little quick thing on the Lee Memorial Library. They have also added to their team. They're pleased to announce that Anna Kang Wyant has joined the library as its new part-time children's assistant. Anna is an award-winning children's author who has already made an impact at the library with her engaging storytimes and programs, including the recent Taylor Swift Swifty Club event, which was sold out. Sorry you missed it, Matt.
There's another one.
Summer reading programs for adults, children, and teens are in full swing, and there's still time to sign up for them. For programming information, make sure you check out the library's newly revamped website. Also, mark your calendars for Family Day fundraiser for the library at the Red Barn at Crestwood on Saturday, September 7th. And that is it for now.
Super, thank you very much. Okay, Councilman DeLuiseo.
Thank you, Mayor. So the DPW committee met actually this morning. You were there, thank you very much. It was a good meeting, we had a pretty large agenda, just typical stuff. I do want to take this opportunity on behalf of the Holiday Observers and the residents of Allendale to thank Andy and the DPW crew for all the support. support and help and cleanup with the Fourth of July. And also Chief Dillon, thank you for everything for the support with, uh, everything that went on with the Fourth of July and the fireworks display. I think it was a good, good day. Everybody had a good time. So thank you very much for that. Our DPW crew, as always, is continuing their normal work, addressing normal issues, picking up storm debris. That was, uh, a good thing we did for the residents after that freak storm that came through, uh, taking care of Crestwood, our downtown flowers, keeping those watered and alive in this nasty heat wave.
For me a day around that.
That's important.
And as always, our fields, taking care of our ball fields. Um, I am happy that the ordinance twenty four ten, uh, passed tonight because that's, it's, it's an important change. When utilities dig up a portion of our road, you know, unfortunately, the code only indicated they, they only had to pave and repair half the road. So now our residents have the benefit of having the entire road paved, which helps our normal yearly budget and workload because we do try to pave certain roads in town. Usually we do five roads a year. Uh, we did discuss this morning that starting next year, we're going to look to do ten roads. So that's, that's exciting.
Quick question on that. I don't mean to, for the roads, so since there's upcoming utility work, now that the ordinance is passed, that's fully in effect. So any work here on out will be fully, fully good. Well, that's curb, curb to curb, right? Not to end, not an entire road.
Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, for the portion they disturb.
Right.
Yeah, we discussed also this morning, um, about how to, you know, let them know, or gonna, you know, let them know ahead of time and be proactive about that.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, as always, you know, I want to thank Andy for addressing our resident issues and concerns. You know, when we do have problems in town, please feel free to contact the DPW and the borough. You know, we're here to help and work for everybody. So when there are issues, I know Andy's very prompt about responding. Uh, he's always very professional and courteous. So whatever we can do, please let us know. Uh, also, you know, last, last meeting, it was official. We hired Drew as our full-time DPW employee. So welcome Drew. We do have two seasonal employees that are working for the rest of the summer, and we're beginning interviews next week for a new borough mechanic. So we're excited about that. So, uh, one final thing I am very happy to announce. We are gonna do a woodchip mulch giveaway for free to residents on Saturday, August tenth, eight A M. To two P M. Uh, this is down behind the DPW building. There's a pile of clean shredded woodchips that can be used for mulch. So they're free charge for any resident wants to come down and get them. The only caveat, you, you load your own. Uh, we will put out a notice in the borough newsletter and on the website. So please come down and take advantage. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman O'Toole.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Fourth of July, this big event of recently, uh, we dealt with, went off extremely well, as usual, thanks to the hard work and participation of not only all of our agencies, but numerous neighboring and not so neighboring agencies as well. Uh, particular thanks obviously to our hometown, police, fire, ambulance, DPW, and CERT. Uh, thank you to Sergeant Jamie Hillgardner, who coordinated all of the agencies as incident commander for briefing was incredibly detailed and very, very thorough. And as an attendee, it was extremely impressive. Um, so thank you again to all involved. The Junior Police Academy starts Monday. Police Department is finalizing hiring of two officers and is working to prepare for the upcoming school year. Um, to date, we have hosted the Gary Letizia Memorial Blood Drive twice. Due to our success, we have been asked to host a third one. So I'm happy to announce that we've just finalized the date, which will be September twenty sixth from one to seven, again at the fire department. These drives would not be nearly as successful as they are without the help of many people. One group which helped tremendously with our last drive, Scouts of Troop Fifty Nine. Scouts helped by passing out snacks and juices, keeping an eye on those who donated to make sure they didn't require any further medical attention, and general cleaning up and restocking those snacks and juices. So Dr. Letizia wanted to be here this evening, uh, but he is presently training one of his agencies. So he asked me to pass along his heartfelt thanks and extend an invitation to the Scouts to again help in September if you can. So this evening, we have with us some scouts. We have Darren, Daniel, and Audrey Kuntersky, Robbie and Sarah Thomas, Emma Givens, Ilah Murphy, and Maddie Nix. And I would like you all to come up. We have a special patch for you guys.
Did you forget?
Did we get everyone?
That's everyone, right?
Okay, good job. Good job. Sorry, just checking. Am I up?
Yeah.
Thanks, you guys. Congratulations.
Walter. We were there that day when they were there, right?
Put on your hat.
Try not to lose it.
All right. Where were we? Committee report.
Our question, industry. Thank you, Mayor. Um, as Councilwoman Lovasolo stated, um, we have hired Dottie um, in the clerk's office as administrative assistant. Um, she's doing very well. Uh, she's, she's learning. She helped me, uh, in the afternoon, set up for the mayor council meeting. Wondered a lot of things with her, explained everything to her. Um, yeah, we're very, we're very, she's a pleasure to work with. So, um.
Excellent. Anything else?
No, that's it. All right.
Chief Mike Dillon.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Echo Councilman Delosios and Councilman O'Toole's sentiments about July fourth. Thank you to the community for safe and enjoyable July fourth. It truly does take a village to make this event happen, and everyone's contribution to a safe and secure event is greatly appreciated. The department is working on various initiatives to address mental health in the community, as well as a program to enhance self-esteem and confidence of middle school girls. These programs are in development phase, so expect more information in the near future.
Excellent. DPW Supervisor Andy Agugliero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so again, thank you very much for the two new DPW trucks, our new pickup trucks, and, um, also the front-end loader, which once the PO is done, it'll be here in a few weeks. Um, the new roll-off that was ordered, uh, last month will be here in September. As, uh, Joe stated earlier, uh, new DPW laborer Drew is doing phenomenal, doing a great job, as the rest of the crew is. Um, thank you again for having Kim Oliver, DPW's secretary, down by us this full-time, Monday through Friday now. Um, she's a tremendous help, and I just wanted to welcome Dottie to the Allendale family.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Borough attorney Ray Wiss.
Thank you, Mayor. Busy couple of weeks, uh, some of which is reflected on the, uh, the agenda, the preparation of the ordinance with respect to the curb uh, paving, uh, working with Chief Dillon on the revision to the promotional ordinance. Um, and I think we have a couple of other ordinances that are in the hopper for introduction at the next meeting. Linda has forwarded those to me. Uh, TJ from my office has been working with the clerk's office on several Oprah requests, as is typical. Um, Tom Borji has been diligently working on the cell tower situation. Uh, I think that the, uh, the process, uh, that the borough authorized has obviously been very successful to date, uh, in the sense that the revenue anticipated by the borough is going to substantially exceed the revenue under the expired leases. So that'll be a net positive. It's, uh, very rare that a municipality actually is in an endeavor that makes money, as opposed to.
Now, and I have to say, I just have to thank everybody involved that because, you know, we could have easily gone a different direction and we really all did our due diligence and researched it. It's just a very, it's not everybody's specialty, cell towers. So we made sure that we held it off and we didn't jump the gun. And thank God, because we are now actually going to own the cell tower. So all that revenue is going to come to us. We're cutting out the middleman and we're actually bringing about two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars more revenue into the borough every year. So, um, it's just, uh, it is, makes me very happy.
Yeah, major positive. Uh, this evening, we basically effectuated, uh, the last parts of a land transfer to a, to a resident, uh, which has been a long time in the making.
Which one?
Uh, that's on the Boston property. So that's, uh, it'll be good to have that done. A quick update on the PK litigation. Uh, I will be concluding the depositions of the principles of PK on July twenty ninth, and we're scheduled to have a settlement conference with the court on September sixteenth. Uh, hopefully the settlement conference will result in some culmination of litigation. If not, the beat goes on. Um, progress this week in the sense that we had the, uh, the first telephone conference with, uh, Green Acres. Um, uh, as, uh, as I've been updating the governing body, uh, we had been formalizing with Beolia as part of the transfer of the water utility, uh, the New Street DPW site. We've had input from the committee, from Andy in terms of uh, what the department needs in terms of their operational facility, what Beolia needs in terms of, uh, their running of the water utility. We basically have agreed on a template of what that looks like, uh, the balance of the space we are offering to Green Acres um, as dedicated passive recreation area, parkland, um, as part of what's called a diversion process. So we had a very positive phone call on Tuesday, Mike Greenland, the borough engineer, myself, uh, with the representative of Green Acres. Uh, she's now talking to her team. I anticipate in the next month or so, they will probably have some representatives up here to walk the property and look at the, uh, the proposed dedication. Um, I think that it'll be a process that'll be quite extended, but at least it's underway now. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. There's a lot of work with, uh, that as well, you know, here, here, even more, yeah.
Took a while.
So, um, all right, I have a brief, uh, mayor's report. I hope everybody is having a wonderful summer. Um, our two-ten community center is really looking good. I know I'm the only one that gotten to go in there. I'm trying to plan, um, some, uh, videos. I'm trying to plan some tours, uh, for our staff first because we are trying to, uh, we already had one meeting. We have another one scheduled that we are going to figure out how the, uh, community is going to be, you know, using this space. So it is completely different than what we have here. So we're really excited about it. Some of the finishes are going in and the colors are really, really beautiful. So I think it's going to be such a major, um, a major, uh, plus for the community. And just as brief backgrounds, um, initially it was going to be two stories, except, um, COVID happened. A lot of things happened in between. Um, we worked differently here. So the prices exponentially went up to the point where we just did not feel it was worth spending taxpayers' money to, uh, put Borough Hall there as well. So that's why we decided to keep Borough Hall here. If we moved over there, the library potentially would have moved over into this space. And though they, they would have most likely have loved that, um, they were very supportive of this decision as well. So they understand it. Um, and, you know, and here we are. Um, I really can't wait until it's going to be done. It should be done by the end of the year, but I'm not making any promises. Um, uh, we're having, uh, we've had another fair share housing meeting. Fair share housing is the Mount Laurel Affordable Housing Obligation that every municipality has. We have our numbers coming down in October. It looks like our numbers are going to be two hundred affordable units, which can translate to a thousand units for the borough, which, as we all know, it's going to be very difficult for the borough to fulfill that. Um, the closed session this evening is going to be discussing a litigation that is going on with all the municipalities in the state, and we're trying to, um, do, um, some effective numbers, I should say. So we'll see how that goes. So we'll be discussing that. Councilwoman Lovasolo was on, um, the mayor's, uh, meeting with myself and also Councilwoman Homan. So we're just going to talk to everybody about that and see which way we're going to be going. Um, as part of, um, our master plan, we are also embarking in a, um, hazard vulnerability assessment study. So we have a meeting next week with all stakeholders that are involved with the borough, like our DPW supervisor and our chief of police and our, our, um, engineer and some other DPW workers that can identify some areas in the borough that we've had some issues like prone to any type of issue that could be affected by some type of climate change, like flooding or things like that. So that is also going to be part of our master plan, and that is going to be, um, we hope telling the full story of, um, fair share housing and with the borough can actually handle as far as building. So with this whole fair share housing, um, we, we are trying to get ahead of it. We are, we've formed a team. We've already had three meetings, been to meetings all over the state. We are doing the best that we can, um, because I, you know, you see what's gone on in other towns when other municipalities, the mayors and councils put their head in the sand. So you have to stay on top of it. The obligation's not going to go away, but we have to do the best that we can to, uh, to, you know, handle this, this obligation. So. Um, we'll be continuing, um, the mural project. We're going to have a meeting coming up soon. So thank everybody for their support with that. I just want to thank Allison for all her work with the audits. Um, that is a lot, there's, uh, always stressful time and all the auditors come in and we pass with flying colors. And also good news is that the county taxes came in a little bit lower than we anticipated. So actually, everybody's taxes that you got in that little piece of paper are going to be a little bit lower. Um, also want to welcome Dottie to the Allendale team. Um, you've already made a great addition. And also Julia. Julia is, uh, going to be our new director of communication. So she's helping us get the newsletter out, hoping, helping us be more transparent with, um, with the borough. And that's one of our goals that we all have is to try to get as much information to everybody out there as they can. So that is my report for the evening. And now I'd like to open the meeting up for any public comments on any matter. So if anybody wants to come in, uh, come on up to talk about anything, please. Come on up. Hey Walter, come on up.
Walter with thirty-eight Hamilton. Would you give, um, Tyler?
Yes.
An explanation of what they plan to do regarding tennis courts?
So tomorrow's meeting is going to be a preliminary walkthrough of the site. Um, we've previously looked at the site in terms of determining how we want to best utilize, you know, all the upcoming sports, pickleball, tennis, basketball. Um, so there's not necessarily a solidified plan yet, but tomorrow's meeting will, you know, put the wheels in motion so that we could start to finalize our specs and ultimately get the project going.
Do you have an idea? Do they replace what they?
So it would, so right now, so the sport court material that's on there was installed approximately twenty fourteen. The under layman, if you will, under the sport court was probably done in the nineteen seventies, if I, we had an estimate. Um, so at this point, it would be a total, you know, rip and replace, um, engineering work would be done regarding, you know, water and flows and things that nature. So realistically, will be a whole new tennis court facility.
It will be, yeah. Two thumbs up for Walter. All right, anybody else from the audience? Like to come up to speak on any matter? Any public comments? Not seeing anybody. I'd like to, uh, introduce resolution twenty four dash one ninety-eight authorization to go to closed session to discuss an affordable housing lawsuit.
So moved.
Second please.
Second.
Councilman Deloizio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, um, the public has to leave. We're not going to be doing any business after this, but, um, if you want to.
And thank you all for coming. Thanks for your help.
Everybody for coming. Appreciate it.
Bye, Dottie. Bye.
Bye. Thanks for coming.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Old bones, Auntie. Old bones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, the session's now over. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody.